Order at 6:30. First on the agenda, any adjustments? Okay, your citizens? Okay, we'll go ahead and approve meeting minutes. I have them from the hearing from November 15th. If anybody wants to kind of go through them if they have it, then whoever wants to make a motion. I didn't see anything that caught my eye. Sounds good.
I mean, that we accept this as submitted?
Okay, second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
No, not on my part.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion is passed. Okay, item five, review the second draft for the proposed subdivision regulations. Maybe if you want to kind of remember, I know we had some minor changes, but...
Yes, I took the old draft that we were looking at and made some changes to them. I didn't mean to necessarily, the comments went away, but I think I addressed all of those. And then I tried to put the new language, just in red, so it jumps out a bit.
Okay.
Generally speaking, some were pretty minor, I'll just focus on the main ones. On page five, so minor subdivisions, this would be four lots or less. It would be, we call it administrative process, so that would go through whoever the town decides is their administrative officer. We talked, maybe we could do that for the town, but that's yet to be determined. That would be an easier, quicker process. So I added that in there, and then there's a new section. Let's see, what was that? Section 240, they kind of talks about that in a little more detail. And then I was just again verifying what we talked about before, that major subdivisions have to be called here. Any comments or questions, or applause? On page six, there was, previously there was a comment about countries, the elevation countries, cities like San Antonio. I had that in more officially, that that information can be found on this, what's called Vermont Center for Geographic Information, VCGI is what we call it in short. So people can find that information. And then I tweaked P, it was sort of an incomplete idea in the previous version, I changed it a little bit. So in state law, there's, in this Title 27, it spells out what a plat. So a subdivision ends up with the plan, it's called a plat. And a plat has to have certain things, and that's spelled out in statute. So I just kind of threw that in there as a reference. Any questions on that stuff?
Yeah, it looks pretty straightforward.
Then in section 240, I was trying to just, what's that look like? So whether it's administrative process to approve a minor subdivision. And I want to skip over the detail, but in short, it talks a little bit about, it's authorized under this section, that's 240.1, that's where it's authorized in state law to do it that way. 240.2 just talks about if the application requirements are, I think I shared with Tim some potential application materials. So we could talk about that at some other point, but you need to fill out the form, you need to pay your fee, you need to give us the draw.
Right.
For the basis. It talks about site visits may happen, they may need to have a, it's probably a good idea, though, is do a site visit, but this says may, so it's an option.
Sure.
And it talks about the approval process. Essentially, there would be no public hearing for this type, the minor subdivision, and whoever the administrative officer is for the town, the select will appoint them, and they could basically just approve it. They approve it here. And if somebody doesn't like the outcome, they can appeal. So that's really what that two sections are talking about. Any questions?
No.
Okay, so starting on page nine of the standards, there was some back and forth, and I was waiting, and everyone really, I think the outstanding question to me is the road standards. We wanted to make them consistent with the town road standards. I just have not, timing got away from me, and I've not been able to talk to Rick about some of the details.
Yep.
I think we're there. I think that this would be, the standards would be consistent with what the town road standards are, but I'm not, I've not been able to verify that with him.
Okay, I talked to him yesterday. He, I think what will, probably easier for him and Fawn, if we kind of give them some options and, because I mean, Fawn, the road crew's so busy.
Yeah, I did that.
Yeah.
And so, I went through, I did my best shot at kind of making it consistent, but I'd feel better getting clarification from those guys.
Right.
Where we got it right.
Yeah, I mean, I think we'll just look at other towns, and as I know now, the state requires a 15-inch culvert for every road or driveway cut.
And some of those materials up there, spill that out.
Sure.
And then, so we're starting on page nine, but throughout, more, more, page. It's more like page 15 and 16. It refers to, refers back to those town road standards. And then it also talks about some of these V-trains standard drawings that are, I gave you up there as well. So I think that that's accurate, but again, I'd feel better talking to Rick about whether you got that right.
Okay. All right, let's see.
Those were the main updates. I would say, I don't want to shift gears too much, but on page 12, I added something for streetlight standards. Tried to brush that out in a little more detail. You're welcome to tweak it, or tell me that it's not quite right, or whatever.
Yeah, no, that looks good. I mean, the new streetlights in town, I think are great. I mean, they feel, they're a little brighter, but they, they chime straight down instead of just casting everywhere.
You still have the one up at the top of your hill?
Very top? No.
No.
That one's been there for...
Long time.
Yeah. I'll tell you later. Have to or not.
I remember now, yeah.
Okay.
Again, I don't want to skip over too much, but those are the, those are the big changes in the standards section. All right, if you wanted to go through in a little more detail, the road standards, I can do that, but again, generally speaking, I was just trying to reference those town standards that were...
Mm-hmm. Okay, that sounds good to me. I don't know what anyone else thinks, but...
Did try to clarify that the sidewalk pedestrian access thing is in the lodges only.
That's right.
We talked about that before. And then really, I think in section, Article 4, I should call it section 410, starting on page 19, there were some updates. We took a quick look at what state law now says, because there was change in state law. I think it's reasonably consistent, but we did add a little bit more detail about the administrative officer piece, just made sure that that was up to date and appropriate for what we're talking about here. I don't think there's a whole lot of other changes. Let me see. We tweaked the waiver section on page 24. Statute, it was a little different than what statute talks about. It's effectively going the same thing, but it uses some different language that's consistent with state law. So again, if either, if there's questions on either of those two sections where I made changes, happy to talk more about that. The subdivision waivers, you can basically read anything, the process, requirements, standards. So it really gives an applicant the ability to say, this doesn't apply to me, use this thing. And so it just gives you that mechanism, flexible as cases, on a case by case basis.
Right. I think that's good.
Me too.
Keeps it flexible, and yeah, because it could get overwhelming, you know? Someone wants to do a five-lot subdivision, and they have to, I don't know, if there's not many issues with it?
Right, so they can say, I don't, this doesn't really apply to me.
Right.
Okay, if it makes sense, you can say, yep.
Okay. All right.
Thank you for taking all the time to go through all of this.
Yeah, this looks really good.
Get it moving along.
Yeah.
Happy to... That's our next step.
Yeah.
That's our next step.
Probably, I think, I'll see what everybody thinks, but maybe turn this loose to the public, put it on the website, and get comments.
Yes.
Have a kind of forum during mud season, probably, that way we might get people. I know sometimes you can entice them with food. We did that, when you were on the board, yeah, last, long time ago, Bruce, when we were proposing zoning, we had a spaghetti dinner.
Yeah, the zoning one, yeah, I was not for the zoning, I was for the original subdivision regulations. We didn't, we didn't do anything like that, and maybe if we had, we would, they wouldn't have gone down in such defeat.
Well, it's a nice informal way, draws people out, you know? But probably best...
Yeah, we had the, we had the meeting in this room, and it was actually pretty hostile. Yeah, it's hostile, as people get in this nice town, but they weren't happy.
Yeah.
The ones that came out weren't.
Right. I think things have changed now.
Because it's a different issue than it was too.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. And it's not telling people how they can use their land, say...
No, the big, the big concern was that we were going to make it so that people could leave their land to their children.
Oh, yeah.
That was, or that if they wanted to do that, the hoops would be so severe that it would be ridiculous. They were just uninformed, and we didn't do a, a good job at informing them, like, we were all young.
Mm-hmm, sure.
So getting this out for people to read is a good idea.
Yeah, what do you think, Jason? I mean, probably post this now on the website and...
Yeah, you know, I think you could post it and just say, hey, I'm thinking about looking at this, adopting this, what do you think? And I think we should follow up with Rick and Fawn, like, you know, they're busy, so I think maybe we can do those two things at the same time.
Sure. Right. And then maybe some kind of open forum in April, early May, sometime in April, maybe towards the end, because people aren't really, you know, going out, and they might be more apt to come. So, okay, we could set a date now, I guess. Anybody, April 15th? I don't know what that is. It's a tax day, isn't it?
Oh, okay, no, we don't want to do that.
You might set the wrong time.
All right.
Think like maybe the last week? Yeah. In April?
All right.
And then maybe by then, we'll probably have even the, the road stuff and all that with Rick figured out, too. And like fees and all that stuff.
So the evening, evening or daytime, late afternoon?
Probably, well, I mean, if we did it on a weekend, but people are usually busy on weekends, I don't know. Probably evening.
Evening, yes.
Yeah. I mean, do we want to do any sort of food, or...
I'd be happy to do, help with that.
Okay.
Well, I don't know if that could do it all, but...
No, I hope.
Put in my chair.
We don't have to have a full dinner or anything, but just...
Work out a menu.
Sure. And then do we have it here, or maybe somewhere else, just a fire hall, maybe?
Can't use the school anymore.
I remember, maybe the Proctorsville Fire Hall?
Yeah.
Who would, would probably ask Bob Glenn?
Yes.
Would you say it'd be a little less informal than in here?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, I'll ask Bob and see what the deal is with that. I think, kind of have things somewhat figured out here. Anybody have anything else on subdivision rigs? Item six, begin discussion on the impacts of short-term rentals on the town and short-term rental regulations. Yes, the Senate Board has asked us to develop a recommendation for the town. And Jason, I'm loving if you could kind of chime in and help us out, we're just kind of getting going on this, so...
Sure, I mean, a lot of towns are talking about this. There are a few towns that currently are in court.
Oh, really?
Because they have tried to do some short-term rental regulations of some sort or another. So we are going to learn more as those court cases unfold, but as the LCT, because Vermont League of Cities and Towns did, I don't know if you all saw this, but they prepared this, which I think is a helpful guide, really, this is their idea of how you would appropriately regulate short-term rentals. Some towns are doing it through zoning, you have zoning, some towns are doing it through a standard ordinance. There's a couple of different ways of looking at them. A lot of towns are doing more of a rental registry type of a thing, where they make short-term rentals registered annually or something like that. And they say, you know, essentially, it's, I'm running a short-term rental on my property, and here is where it is, those details, I meet state fire code, you know, you're approved, I meet the code, I've inspected, something like that. And there might be some other standards that they might have, but a lot of times, that's the key one. And then it has, you know, contact information in case of emergencies or things like that. Some towns are really trying to regulate noise, parties, traffic, and sorts of things, so you know, you can sort of add standards, if you will, as appropriate. And anyway, I think the, the LCT guide is helpful. I guess Killington, Plymouth, Chester all come to mind, they have similar ordinances with Ruth. Chester's reimagining theirs, they, I don't know if Cavendish would be in that ballpark, but they had enough short-term rentals where they didn't want to handle it themselves to administer, because they, you know, I think they had...
I was reading like...
Don't hold me to maybe 60.
I think that's what I read, 50 or 60, yeah.
And it's a fair amount of work to keep the registry up and running, so they were hoping to have a private company do that for them, and it didn't really work out. So they had to quickly come up with Plan B and make it work. But I think effectively, you know, you have to think about that.
Right.
Who does that? You have time to do that.
Now, is that a million-dollar question? Is that something the Regional Planning Commission might do, or...
I, I don't know, I guess I'm, maybe not, but we should talk, I don't know. I mean, there are companies that do it.
Okay.
I don't have to tell my head, I don't know how many, or Cavendish, how much of a lift that would be.
Right.
We can talk more about that.
Yeah, that's just, because I know, like with Rick, he's, I don't think he wants to do...
My, my sources of town...
Most of those are property, property management companies.
Yeah, and some of them are like Granicus, or I think is the name.
Granicus, GovOS, so I was able to sit on the Lublo Rental Registry Committee that was formed almost two years ago, and they, similar, the Select Board passed them to, you know, what should, what should the town do about it? Lublo is obviously in a little different situation than Cavendish, but in some of those conversations with GovOS and, and Granicus, the, kind of what they really, they're a third party that's here to, they'll scrape data on Airbnb, VRBO, how many do you have in town, what are, what are the rents, what are, any, any of that public information, figure out where they are based on town records and, and all publicly available data. And there, what they talked about was, what is the goal of it? Is it to keep your, keep your community strong? Is it as a source of income? Is it for safety, but really trying to pinpoint something specific there? And, and that allows an ordinance to have some teeth behind it. Like, a city like Burlington, they tried to tackle a lot with that, and they're in court right now. There's, there's some things that, you know, work well. There's been multiple cases on the, in the federal courts that say you can't, a short-term rental is not a commercial enterprise as far as zoning. So you can't do it through zoning. Obviously, that doesn't specifically apply to, to Cavendish. But one thing, and full disclosure, I own a vacation rental management company. But safety was a big thing that Lublo focused on. It was a few years ago, fire department showed up and threw a fire, no idea that this barn had been turned into an Airbnb with a bunch of people sleeping in it, not up to code, all this. But that was one, one of the things that kind of prompted them to look at it. And that's something that I see a lot of, is, safety is a pretty big concern. The thing people don't realize is that all of a sudden, you're renting out to the public with no building code for private residences, that comes into play, especially with occupancy and means of egress, those are, those are some big ones. But, and, and one thing that we, there's the Vermont Short-Term Rental Alliance, which is actually a really good resource. Julie Marks, who's the head of that, just spoke in Lublo last month at a, I think it was, the Select Board and Trustees met jointly for that. And it's, a lot of times you, if you have, you know, some problem properties, it's, it can typically be just a couple of properties that do have issues, or that one neighbor who is always picking up the phone complaining about things.
Whoa! I think so.
Sorry, guys.
No, I've heard this happened before, so...
So that's a great example of why someone should be monitoring these.
Whoa. What the hell?
I don't think anybody was on any...
What the hell? What's this world coming to? Anyway, just forget that.
What, what word did you use that triggered that?
And again, this really is a hot button issue, is like, it kind of, and I think Cavendish too, where, you know, no zoning, your property rights and, and all that, and that is a, you know, a very real thing. But also, you know, in, in my mind, as soon as you're, you know, you're doing this, this hosting thing, you are, you are a commercial enterprise in the sense of you need to be paying rooms and meals tax, you need to be up to, up to code for, you know, as soon as you rent for one night in the state, like, your, your property needs to be up to code for that. So I think, and back to that, like, there could be those, those problem properties, also that, that one neighbor who really doesn't like it, and, and those could be sources of, of issues, but I think it's definitely something that, that could be a good income source for like, hey, you're, you know, any, this registry money, it pays for that third party, but also any, any other profit goes to the fire department, or goes towards certain, certain services that, you know, that are needed in the town. Yeah, but it's definitely a, a lot of, a lot of feelings on, on both sides of it. But I think from someone inside the industry, having certain standards and regulation is, is positive. It's a very unregulated industry, you know, like hotels, like they have certain standards that, that they need to uphold, and it's something that, you know, there's, there could be a lot of people staying in Cavendish, but they're not in hotel.
Right.
So...
Now, do you know, in terms of the fire marshal, what the threshold is for when they come and inspect?
So I have all of my properties inspected, regardless of how big they are, how many people they can sleep, but really, pretty much eight people and below, you can technically self-certify. It's, knowing what I know is like, I, I don't know at all, so having a professional come in and give you that certificate of occupancy is, is pretty good, but pretty much anything over eight people is, you need to have additional safety measures, whether that's pole stations or sprinkler systems, or really over eight is where it gets into, you know, you really want that, that piece of paper to make sure you're, you're doing things safely.
Right. Now, and who, you said a professional, so that's, there's...
Fire marshal.
Oh, the fire marshal.
And they inspect.
Okay.
The fire, the state fire marshal.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so it's something that they have very limited resources, and if, you know, if there's something that said everyone has to get this, this certificate of occupancy, it would, you know, it could take five years for, for them to get through all of the short-term rentals. Like, I know in Lublo, I've heard numbers from 600 to 1,200 short-term rental units. I'm not sure what Cavendish is, but it would be a fraction of that, but, but still a number to be, it's not small.
Right. Well, that's a big issue then, if we're concerned with safety and we're requiring to have a fire marshal sign off, and they can't.
And I do think, you know, also living in a residential apartment in Lublo, that the safety goes for, for all of those things. So I, I wish Lublo was, was able to come up with something for, for both, but if the flood hadn't happened, the, the fact that my building that had been renovated two years ago, there was never a state permit, never a local permit, things were not up to code, you know, so it happens on, on both counts, and sometimes the residential can be, can be worse, but, but it's definitely something to be aware of as...
Right. Right, because I mean, the, I mean, the regulations, it might be useless if the fire marshal can't get there to inspect the properties.
Yeah, and some, I know some towns, it's been like, you know, maybe you have five years to, to get that certificate, or, you know, you can self-certify.
Okay.
And that's, so there is a, a form that the state of Vermont has that you self-certify, and that's, that is required to be up in every short-term rental unit in the state. It's something that wasn't well-advertized, or not a lot of people know about it. So I think education is a big, is a big piece of it. I, I work with a lot of homeowners, and there's a very small few that, that don't really care about the safety things, all of them like, hey, like, I want to be in compliance, you know, the insurance company, they, hey, they know they're renting, but they're not coming out there to inspect and, and make sure things are, are up to code.
Okay. All right.
In terms of administration, the number of people who would need to administer some of these things is, is an issue.
Yes.
With the town, or private, or...
So that's what that third party, third party does, is they will, they can do a bunch of different things, but even, you know, they have the online registration, they, they collect the money, they just, you know, they disperse it to the town, they handle, there's like a hotline, so, hey, you have an issue, and you can call that hotline, and that's, that's something good, where, you know, you're able to see like, oh, we, we have a big problem with trash in these Airbnbs, it's, you know, the bears are getting the trash all the time, or, or maybe it's not an issue, and maybe you have that one neighbor who's always upset, or that one property, that, yeah, it's very noisy, it has trash, it has too many people, whatever that, that might be. Another one that doesn't get talked about, subway systems, that's something that...
For, for up to eight people?
Yeah, or like, hey, you know, it's a five-bedroom, but it's actually only eight people. It's not the 12 that they're putting in there or something like that.
That can be part of the... That can be part of the self-reporting too.
Yep.
I guess it's how far does the town wanna go? Cause if we go start enforcing, you know, noise regulations, trash, that might be too much. Cause I don't know, you know, how do you enforce that?
And who does the paperwork and where, and who stores it or where does it?
Yeah, we have ordinances now that I don't think we enforce.
No.
So, yeah.
What sparked this?
Don't you think it's a number of people who are concerned about a lot of homes that don't have, they don't have neighbors that they can, you know, talk to or, you know, it's always somebody transient? That's the feeling that I got with a number of people who see all the empty homes or the homes that are being used for rentals.
I think it was that in the, uh, being with the town water sewer also.
That's right, that's right.
That was talked about, but it didn't become a real issue. Cause if a town is fully, um, if all the homes were used by people who owned them, the sewer system should be fine for all of those. So if you have somebody else renting in, that should not be an issue.
Well, if you have four people, but then you have 20 in there, it's ten.
Well, if it's overused, that's for sure.
It's, yeah, that's the issue.
Do we have indications that their system's been overstressed or?
Yes.
What's that?
Well, on, uh, like, uh, holiday weekends or actually winter weekends as well as like Christmas and New Year's, that stretch, the wastewater plant gets, gets close to capacity.
Is that, so that's the folks that are running it or saying it's a toll bonus or?
Yeah, total volume going through it.
They've monitored the total volume, they said they're just about at capacity?
Yeah, in fact, 15 years or so before the upgrade was done, there was no, there were, the town wasn't granting any more wastewater permits for anyone because, because of the, uh, the, the stress being put on in holiday times. And then, then another pumping station was, not a pumping station, the, uh, the lift that, that services the lagoon, you know, down there. Anyway, that, that became larger and so was able to handle more affluent. But that was, that was a dicing for a while. It was like the town had reached the point where at least in the villages, there could be no more growth at all.
So it might be worth asking the folks that run that to see if there is, like, what the data is on the capacity issue? You know what I'm saying? Like, we're, we're kind of speaking anecdotally if I'm not mistaken.
Probably, yeah. Also I've heard, I think there's plenty of, plenty left, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They love to, the skiers love to take long showers though.
Oh, yeah.
They really do. You know, if you talk about the family of four, it'll, I think, most people kind of watch the hot water, you know, and say, well, you don't wanna waste it. Don't wanna take it as, as long as is necessary. But when you're, when you're down there, you know, I've been in the wastewater plant when, at, when it's on a, on holiday time and versus just another normal day in Cavendish, there's a dramatic difference.
Yeah. Now Noah, I'm not sure, in terms of, can you regulate how many people per bedroom in the short term?
I'm not sure if you could, you could do that, but I think you could, you know, require that you're up to code for occupancy.
That's right.
I mean, a pretty good rule of thumb is two people per bedroom plus two.
Right. Parking and all that.
Yeah, and if that's most, um, I, I don't know how you, if you could enforce parking outside of the ordinance that already exists.
That'd be like a zoning, you'd think.
Do you have fun, fun parking to be a problem?
No, most of my places are on the mountain. So it's, it's pretty well, it's either a private driveway or, you know, the condo associations handle, handle that. But like I did live in town and, you know, there was people that they, they filled this other house and they ended up parking in our driveway. And there was some weird things like that. So I, I think it does exist. I'm not sure how much of that is, um, based on the short-term rental. It, it's hard to quantify without a registry. Is that a second home? Or is it a vacation rental? So, and most of, the majority of properties are used, they're second homes that are used a portion of the year and they're rented out the other portion. So it's not necessarily, uh, you know, these for-profit entities coming in to do it. It's, it's more, hey, how can I generate some cash flow? And there, and there are local people that, that do it as well. You know, they'll, they'll go to Florida for the winter and they'll rent out their house. Or, um, you know, hey, you, you just don't use it all the time. So.
And the short-term rental regulations, it'd be, I think it includes like fewer than 30 people or 30 days and then more than 14 days.
Yes, so that's what's technically quantified in the, in the state as far as what a short-term rental is. But you still need to be up to safety code if you're renting for 14 days or less.
Okay.
And you still have to pay rooms and meals tax. But if you're renting less than 14, there's an income tax. You don't have to pay income tax or something like that.
Right.
But.
I mean, I think like a simple registry would make sense cause it deals with safety, how many people are there? And would the fire department get like a list then that they would know if there was an incident? I don't know how that works.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I think it's, yeah, I don't know how it exactly works for, for that. But at least like you know that, hey, this is an occupied, the town knows that this is an occupied space. And, you know, it has the proper, um, fire protection, fire safety protection.
If the town would have the list, the town would certainly share that with the fire departments.
It's not the fire department that does any of the inspections or regulations, it's the state.
Oh, I know, yeah. I'm just thinking if there's like an incident, like a fire, how would they know that, you know, there's somebody at the barn or whatever? They'd have to have that list or something.
So I would imagine.
Yeah.
I imagine the town could, you know, they're gonna have the list. And so they can share it with whoever they want to. I would imagine it would be a good idea to share it with the fire department.
Sure.
Everyone knows where they are.
Right.
They have their contact info if they need it.
Yep.
Is there any liability for the town if you don't do anything? Or if somebody sues the town and say, you should have known better or something like that?
Or you should have had regulations?
You should have regulations?
I don't know.
I don't know. And it's one thing, it's like these, these rules already exist. Like, it's just like, hey, make sure you're up to code.
Yeah.
So it's not necessarily, you know, having any new, uh, standards. It's really just like, and I think that's where the education piece is, is like, just educate people of like, hey, this, you know, just so you know, like you, you wanna be up to code. You wanna make sure your septic system can handle it. You need to, you know, make sure that your, your sewer allotment is adequate.
I think, and the other factor to think about is, you know, do you have one of these third-party entities doing the registry? The towns that are doing that are charging quite a bit more because those firms charge 700 to do it. So it's like 200, 250 bucks or something to register.
Right, and it's, you know, these, these short-term rentals are a for-profit. You know, it's not like, um, you know, mom and dad subdividing off a piece of land for their kids. It's, so I don't have an issue with that.
I think their recommendation was like, the average rental rate per night. So two nights. So if Cavendish was $200 a night, it would be two of those. And I think like Lublo's at least was, I wanna say it was like $40,000 a year for this third party. And, and those numbers made sense for, for, um, for those, uh, annual registration fees. But I'm not sure how it scales for a smaller town.
Do you know, is it like a fixed fee that, or is it just?
I don't know. I think the initial, like the select board approved it was like $26,000 for the initial data collection. And I think that was based on an initial number of like, hey, there's this many rentals. And they monitored that throughout one year.
Okay.
There, really nothing happened with any of that data. But like understanding like, oh, Cavendish has this many short-term rentals and that's that percentage. And it, it can provide information as like, oh, hey, we, you know, this is a bigger problem or not even a problem. This is like a, this is a big impact or it's a small impact. And, and that was, the idea behind it was just to, um, see it there. Because like I, there's a lot of talk about it being a housing, uh, an issue with, with local housing. There's not a lot of data that supports that. And, and I definitely don't see it, at least on, on the mountain. Like these places were, you know, they were never built for residential use. Or they're, you know, they're second homeowners that, you know, if they couldn't rent them, they would sit vacant for the rest of the year. And that's, that's obviously tourism dollars that are coming into the town, into the community. So there's, there's definitely a large economic impact in a positive, positive way for having these, these visitors here that maybe wouldn't be here.
Okay.
And the places generally look nice.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that extra income that, that people, uh, generate, a lot of times it just goes right back into, into the, uh, into making that, that place look good. It's paying taxes, it's, you know, it's offsetting those costs.
Okay.
I think Noah said it earlier though, like, what's the purpose? I think public safety is an obvious one.
That's right.
I think start small.
Yep.
If you had a basic order, basic rental registry, it just asks for a few things and you can always, you know, add more, uh, standards or whatever down the road. But I would imagine you'd wanna start small.
I agree, yeah. Yeah, it's simple. Something manageable.
I think we also would wanna make it be all rentals and not just short-term rentals. You know, we have a duplex, you know, we made sure fire marshal came through, but there are other rental properties where, you know, that's not the case. You know, anything over eight people, it's a whole different ball of wax than if it's just, you know, a normal family house. But I think it would be wise, if you're gonna target one, hit them all.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah.
So is, is it not a standard to, uh, have, um, a septic system, either public or private, that you can have so many bedrooms for, for use of that particular septic? I mean.
Yeah, but bedroom count does not necessarily associate with people count. So you could have a two-bedroom and if you had two bunk beds, it sleeps eight people or something.
I guess the assumption is too big for, but it's only an assumption.
And I think, I don't know when it changed, but at some point, uh, it changed where like your third bedroom becomes one person. So like a four-bedroom is actually six people. It's not eight or 10 people that you might be able to sleep in there. And that's at least the, like a, a septic system.
Right. In the state, they permit septic systems by number of bedrooms. It's not number of people. So for residential. So I.
So sometimes you can't add a bedroom to your house because you're not supposed to add more people to the house. You know, you have a three-bedroom house and it's for that particular, um, septic system properties.
Yeah.
So. I, I got off, I must have gotten off on a different tangent.
And like in an older community, like there's septic systems that were grandfathered in and who knows what those are actually like.
It's possible a house would have a, somebody might have opted to have a bigger system, but they're only approved for three bedrooms.
Okay.
And they wanna do a fourth bedroom, cause maybe they knew they would wanna have.
Okay, so.
Addition, somebody might have had some forethought. They still need a wastewater amendment, but they might.
It might be, it might be available to them at some point.
But that's totally rare.
Okay, right.
And to the town sewer, you'd have to pay an additional hookup fee, I think, for adding that.
Addendum to the hookup fee. Yep. Very rarely happens.
There's nobody to self-report.
Right.
Which makes the whole self-reporting thing. So it's one more thing that the state would do, you know? Contractors need to be licensed, but nobody oversees it. I mean, having regulations without teeth is pointless.
It is. Absolutely.
And that's another, the, um, the state has looked into this of doing a statewide thing and it was, it was very restrictive and it didn't go far. But it is something where the way I kind of understand it is that, you know, if the state passed something and the town didn't have it, okay, it's based on that. But if you did have something, then it would allow more local control for, um, for that.
Okay. Is there anything else on this or?
Well, go on a little further. It, it's done properly, it's gonna be a extraordinary amount of work for someone.
Yeah, probably a third party.
Yeah.
I don't see anybody in town, I mean.
I mean, you know, they're, they're almost up to capacity here for workload.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right. Noah, would you be willing, like the select board meeting? Cause they asked us to kind of be our, I'll be there too, but you know, since you're very knowledgeable on it.
Yeah, I mean, what is the, what is the, we feel about a direction of a recommendation to?
Well, I mean, I'm definitely leaning towards just a simple registry. Keep it simple.
A voluntary.
Voluntary. That's my opinion. I don't.
Yeah.
Why bother?
Yeah.
If it's voluntary, why bother?
If it's voluntary? It's a mandatory registry?
I mean, I think it's, I think it's stupid in the first place. But I think if you're gonna do it, you gotta do it right.
Having a registry, you, you disagree with the idea of the?
Yeah, I think it's none of our business. It's private property rights. If someone is, you know, causing an issue with the neighbor, you take care of it.
Take care of that interaction.
I think fire safety is a whole different ballgame, but that's in place now, but there's no teeth.
There's been. Short-term rentals have been going on in this area for, just to, well, damn you forever.
Every resort place in the whole country.
It's not, maybe to, it's somewhat new to a, a town like Chester that's on the fringe of being a resort town and they're somewhat surprised by it. But I don't think anyone in Lublo or even, even Cavendish should be surprised about short-term rentals.
It's an evolution. You know, you see motels going by the wayside because Airbnb is taking over. You know, it used to be rental, Sunshine Properties, you can go on down the list. There are people that used to be in that business, know as, you know, a rarity. Because now people are doing it themselves through the Airbnb. So it's just, it's one more evolution. It's more obvious now because everybody knows about VRBO or you're gonna go somewhere, you do it. And that's, it's just what's happened, the evolution of the recreation industry.
I mean, do we have an issue? I guess my point is if we have them, if it is self-reporting, I mean, yeah, there're gonna be some people who say, I don't care, I'm gonna do this and there's nothing really we can do about it. But I'm guessing the majority of people will wanna do things right. They may not know, at least if we have something in town to say, hey, look, this is our rental registry, it's on our website, you know, fill this out.
What's the purpose of it though?
To keep the properties that people are renting hopefully up to code. And the town will know if, uh, you know, who's, how many people are renting, you know, for safety. And I'm just looking at it as like safety. In terms of, you know, parking and noise, I don't think we can do anything about that now. So.
I like the idea if you go and rent a place, that it's up to code and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it may actually, in terms of protect the town, say if something does happen and we don't have this, what are the chances of the town being sued because we didn't have a rental registry? As more, more and more towns get them, I think it'll be kind of like, why don't?
Why don't you?
So.
So Killington has a really good one that's been successful. There's a lot of other, some towns have missed the mark and been too onerous or no teeth or, you know, there's no good way to, to check things and, um, but, I mean, it's something that, you know, are there, like I'm, I'm really waiting for, for there to be a catastrophe. Like, I'm I'm really waiting for for there to be a catastrophe and and there's a fire or something, someone someone loses life and and that's where things are really going to get cracked down on and.
And that's the only reason for having something like this is to protect against.
Yeah. But but there's a lot of work that goes into it. There's a lot of costs to do it right and, you know, what is the, what is the goal? And I mean, just looking at the data that I have available, there's under a hundred and fifty short-term rentals in Cavendish. That that could be higher or lower, but it's, you know, there are, there are quite a few.
But be something like if you're if you're going to rent your rent your property, short-term or long-term, and collect some sort of fee for the service, you need a certificate of occupancy. And it must be posted by the front door on the inside or something along that line.
That makes sense.
So there is like that, that self-certification form for the state, like that's something that, you know, you're you're checking that your place is is legal and you sign it and.
And that's for every people.
That's for any, if you're renting any, anything, one night, you need to have that posted. It's not checked. Not many people know about it. But it is technically required.
Never knew that.
Yeah.
You?
That you could self-report?
And that that's just for short-term rentals.
Maybe we should see what Killington is all about and see if it's a model that we could look at. Is that?
I mean, it's it's definitely, I guess, just like they, there's a lot that goes into that one, though. And a lot of, they they use, I believe they use GovOS for their as the third party to manage manage that. But, yeah, I mean, if you're doing it in-house, it would, it would probably be a full-time, close to a full-time position.
Now, those third-party managers, are they in town doing inspections and things?
It's not a, it's not a manager or anything. They, it's a, it's a software, basically. And so if you're listing it on any of the major listing sites, they'll they'll find it, they'll be able to work with Town Records and Google Maps and like, this is, oh, this property here, this is the address, this is the owner. And 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 that's how they, that's how they do it. You know, like I've definitely done a lot of that and Lublow's land records are all on online, so it's very easy to figure out who who owns it. And, oh, it's in LLC, okay, this is who the LLC is by. So, but it but it just allows the town to like, oh, here are the hundred and fifty places. Looks like we only have twenty people who who signed up. Let's send letters to them or, you know, certain things like that. But then, again, okay, if those people aren't in compliance or who's, you know, the letter gets sent by the the third party, but who's who's going to knock on the door to, you know, whatever, hey, you're you're out of compliance, you can't rent anymore, you know?
Or if you say you're out of compliance.
The police powers of the select board.
Had an issue?
Yeah, or like you just, you didn't sign up if this is a required registry.
Anytime there's someone other than your own family in a house, it's considered a public building. And once it's a public building, then it's the state fire marshal that is responsible for, you know, fire code, they hire wire, they date every bedroom, you know, seal, I mean, the lift is is long, is the, you know, the windows are a significant thing. You know, are they ingress windows, are there certain heights on the floor? I mean, it's, it's expensive.
Okay. Well, I mean, we could continue the discussion, we don't have to make a decision tonight.
No.
Maybe we can look, each one of us separately, to kind of look at different short-term rentals. You know, let's go to the different town websites and I'm sure they're on there.
Yeah, no expert, but I think Killington and Chester are the, like, the two better thought through ordinances.
Okay.
Good place to start?
Sure.
And those, like those third parties, they've, at least in Lublow, they gave kind of informative talks, they came and presented on Zoom. Also, the Vermont Short-Term Rental Alliance, that has a lot of good resources about about good ordinances and and bad ones and kind of what what they're into. And and that's an organization that is for regulation, but in a, in a good, or I guess in a way that that allows that industry to to thrive. Because it was very interesting, the stats, and, you know, I think in Lublow, it's very different, but in Cavendish, it might be a little bit more about it, where there's a lot of local people that are doing it. And it's, they're, you know, they're, it's not a majority of them are, you know, they want to be doing things by the book and and all that, so. Yeah.
Okay. Well, great, well, thanks, Noah. Thanks, Jason. Does anybody have anything else on this or? All right, go to next item.
Review correspondence.
Review correspondence, we don't have any.
Does anybody write us anymore?
I'm wasting time. Actually, I should look at you over there, but. Okay, other business. Energy plan. It's coming back to us because I failed to inform the neighboring towns. I was supposed to send it. But I've done that, so we had, just to be safe, we need to have just another hearing. Two minutes.
Okay. All right.
I'd like to do it next February, yeah, just get over with.
Yes.
Because we we ended up having basically an informational thing. We still had the meeting with the select board, but. So. And then we may have a conditional use hearing next month, maybe, for the little Black River Produce Building. Wrapped in cheese company.
Yep.
For flood hazard stuff. I think it's pretty straightforward, but. So that might be on the agenda as well. That would probably be a pretty quick one. Not doing much outside at all, I don't think.
Anything further on Vermont apple pie?
No, we did, nothing yet.
Okay.
We did, Rick and I went yesterday, I guess they made a complaint. The neighbors were putting sandbags up or stockpiling them at the edge of the bank on a pallet, which is legal. It's there temporarily. So they made a complaint to the state. Tim McNamara, I guess, the environmental officer. So we just went out there to see.
So anything happening with the letter?
Oh, the violation, your notice? It's been served, I mean, I don't know. I haven't heard anything. So. So anyway, that's, that's about it. Anybody have any other business? Okay, motion adjourned? Second?
I second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor? All right. Sounds good.